Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
All right, with that, we'll go downstairs.
Test one, test one two.
If I can get a roll call.
Mrs. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Craig? Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mrs. Murray? Mr. Bateman?
Here.
Mr. Quarrano?
Here.
Mr. Tassit?
Here.
Alright, with that, we have a call to move forward. There's no action coming from both sessions, so we will look to number four, the Pledge of Oros. We have the High Five winners.
Season?
President of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, board. So tonight, we've got our April Huntley High Five winners here. They're each going to come up and say their name and their grade and listen to why they were nominated. So do you want to kick us off, Wally?
Hi, my name's Wally. I'm in second grade and my school is Tassit.
Wally, I'm going to read a little bit about what your nomination said and on the back of your certificate, it has the whole nomination. Wally is such a kind student to all friends. He always finds ways to help his peers and is extremely hard worker who loves to take all subject areas to the next level. Congratulations.
I'm Amelia Coldera, I'm in second grade through my school's certificate.
He is always respectful and responsible. He is kind towards others and helps her peers and teachers. He problem solves and works with others to come up with solutions. Congratulations.
Hello, and my name is Graham Twirek and I am in sixth grade and my school is Martin Elementary.
Alright Graham, here's what your nominee had to say. Graham is an excellent example of a leader. He is kind to others, works hard, and sets a great example by helping others when they are in need. He lets people join his group no matter if they're friends or not. He conducts himself in a great manner that other students and teachers respect and admire. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Samantha and I'm in third grade and I go to school at the Ghee.
Samantha, here's part of your nomination. Samantha is dedicated to her school and has a clear understanding of where her focus should lie. This level of self-awareness at this age is invaluable for success. She constantly gives her best, not only maximizing her potential, but being a positive example to everyone. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Amelia and I'm in sixth grade and I go to Heinemann Middle School.
Amelia was chosen to represent Heinemann Middle School for her infectious positivity and involvement in school. She's a hard worker, a caring classmate, a member of the orchestra choir, and overall a great person to be around. Kind and caring towards all, she can regularly be heard laughing and have positive interactions with all around her. Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Holden Roof, I'm in seventh grade, I go to Martin Middle School.
Holden has a strong work ethic, exceptional dedication, and an eagerness to learn. Constantly demonstrating a genuine interest in the subjects being studied, going above and beyond what is required to explore topics in depth. A great communicator, actively participating in class discussions and collaborating with peers. Positive attitude and willingness to question and seek, help when needed, contribute to your overall success. Congratulations.
Hello, I am Nico Canishu, a sophomore at Huntley High School. And you may remember me, I was the mysterious voice from the February student's booth.
Oh, back over there, Nico, I got a reading. Not here, that's what Mrs. Miller had to say. Nico is such an awesome kid. Very involved in his education and with the happenings in Huntley. He's a student council member and takes an active role in school improvement and leadership. Was a tour guide for the Huntley Chamber of Converse event and just an overall great kid. And I have to say, I've had the opportunity all year long, just by accident one day, coming to the principal leadership meeting one morning. I'm having the opportunity to get to know Nico and has helped with so many different things. This is a founding word for Student Voice, so thank you for that.
Hi. I'm Amelia and I'm in a line program.
Hi, Amelia. Amelia demonstrates a thoughtfulness towards others and is always respectful and kind. Likes to be helpful and always holds the door open for others. He greets everyone each morning with a big smile on his face. Works hard to improve his self-awareness and how he reacts in situations and finding strategies to regulate himself in ways that have earned his opportunities to begin attending MCC part of the day. Congratulations. Alright, so now we're going to ask who has come on around. We have a certificate. We'd like to congratulate each one of you and then we'll get a picture and your parents can get a picture. And I would just like to thank all of your parents for the wonderful job that you've done raising these fine individuals. So thank you for sharing them with us. Do you want to go on this side or the balance up?
Yeah, forget it.
Would you mind coming on this side? Could you stand here next to Wally? You want to be there?
I'll be.
That's just nice. There you go. Nope, you're good. All good. Nope, all good. Okay, guys, look up here. Congratulations.
Alright, with that, I always enjoy the high five. So we'll go on to the student's booth.
Alright, this afternoon, or this evening I should say, but earlier this afternoon, I had the opportunity to go on over and just check in with our two fifth grade Martin student ambassadors who have spent some time with Mr. Tappel to put together a nice presentation on explaining them that you are all scary people, right? And it's important that we hear from you about Martin and how things are going because that helps us do our job better and how we make decisions. And so it was great to be able to meet them and absolutely, after just a couple of minutes talking to you, because of Tappel, I knew exactly why these two are chosen to be the leaders and to present tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Evie and Amber.
Hello. Hello, I'm Evie Schmidt and I'm in fifth grade. I'm Amber D and I'm also in fifth grade. Alto. Alto is one of the most famous patsy dogs because he was a leader. Every trimester, one student from every class is selected by their classmates as Alto because they are a leader. These people are respectful, respectful, brave, and involved. A ceremony is held for each grade and the Altos are presented with a certificate, balloon, shirt, and cookie. A fifth grade student ambassador reads what their classmates describe about them and Altos can be a leader to others. What makes Martin special? Martin is special because Martin has many fun things. Once a year, everybody runs on the Marlowe track for an hour. Some parents come and watch. Orchestra band and choir perform for parents and other students once in a while. If you aren't interested in any of those activities, that's fine. This year, all the fifth graders got to perform in concert together. Band, choir, and orchestra. One thing that only fifth graders can do is band, orchestra, and choir. Our band has, our school band has eight instruments and percussion, which has a bunch of different instruments. These are alto saxophone, clarinet, flute, French horn, olo, percussion, trombone, trumpet, and tuba. The school orchestra has four instruments. These instruments are bass, cello, viola, and violin. The choir doesn't have any instruments, but they use their voices. They have part ones, which are the people who are more comfortable with high notes, and part twos, who are more comfortable with low and middle notes. Create harmony. The band instructors are Mr. Bowen, Mr. Verma, the orchestra instructor is Ms. Dumsworth, and the choir instructor is Ms. Carpenter. Learning fair. Learning fair is an event once a year where students get to come to the school after school has finished to examine and admire the presentations of their peers. This is also an opportunity for students and parents to socialize with others. Our last learning fair was yesterday. Fun Fest. Fun Fest is a thing that fifth graders do. At the end of the year, kids can earn Fun Fest tickets for good behavior. Students will be assigned to groups and they will have to make a game slash booth. Every booth has a prize. Most kids have candies, have candy. Booths do cost Fun Fest tickets to play and some classrooms cost Fun Fest tickets. Sometimes they run around the outside of the school, and sometimes they run in the gym. They all do different activities. Robotics Club is only open to 5th graders. They learn in those robots. Like student ambassadors, you have to fill out a packet and turn it in. It is first come, first served, with limited spots. Lastly, Sound Language Club is a club where they learn sound language. One of the things they are doing this year is signing to the song "Summer Over the Rainbow" slash "What a Wonderful World" while the choir sings it. Thank you for watching the presentation.
Alright, thank you for the presentation. I have a question. Do you feel ready to go into 5th grade?
Um, me personally, I feel a little ready, yeah. I mean, it might be a little bit scary, but yeah, because I'm going to a different school and stuff, so. I think I'm ready, I am a little bit nervous though.
I'm sure it'll be fine, you guys have done one before here.
Alright, I have a question. I know Amber, you play the cello. Evie, I don't know if you are in band, choir, or orchestra?
I'm in band and choir, and I play the oboe.
So both of you are involved in some of the other components, and so your presentation focused a lot about some of the other things that Martin has to offer outside of the things we know about, right, like math and trigonometry and those things. How are those experiences, whether it's the field trip, things that, after-school activities that you highlighted, or the band, choir, and orchestra, how does those help you be a well-rounded student besides just the math and the chemistry?
I think it really improves your skills, and like, it does help like, a little bit like, with, it does help with like, your mental health, it makes you, I like it a lot, so it makes me really happy when I'm doing it, so it makes me kind of excited to go to school, like, kind of motivated to do something. So, I think it improves, I think it just, it's educational and it's fun, like the presentation that about.
I think with the after-school activities, you get to meet a lot of new people that I haven't necessarily met in my classes, and I think that's very fun, because I've met a lot of new fans, friends being in band and choir.
And in middle school, there are a lot of clubs and activities that you can join. You talked about the handful that we just started over at the elementary school, and some of those are very special just to Martin. If you could say that there is one after-school activity that you think would be really good to add, what would it be that we don't offer?
I think, I mean, I'm not sure if this would be allowed, but maybe a gymnastic club? I mean, it might be prone to a few injuries, I'm not sure if it would be a perfect idea, but it would be really fun.
Yeah.
I know that the middle schools already have this, but I think track would definitely be fun, to have in 5th grade, or available to 4th and 3rd graders too, and I, yes, I know the middle schools already have that, but I feel like that'd be fun to add.
So an extension off of Girls on the Run, that's for a part of the year and whatnot, and Amber, I've seen other schools, I don't know about the elementary, but we could look into it, some of high schools that have gymnastics, they oftentimes partner, or it's called co-op with other high schools, because their high school might not have enough, but a few high schools get together and do something like that.
Yeah, I did hear about that before.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. Are your parents gonna have a chance to get a picture of you up there? If they want one, or teachers, I see some teachers in the audience too.
Alright, moving on to number six. I think recognition, maybe that's what the young authors in the audience... Or maybe they're... Now, a few.
Have you been facing both to the other end? I'm pretty surprised. Thank you. I'm here, I'm here. I can hear this. Hello, and good evening. My name is Michelle Boski, and I am the 3-5 coordinator for Young Authors, and Kristi Gibbs is the K-2 coordinator. She's unfortunately not able to be here tonight, but tonight, we're gonna honor our young authors, and the District 158 Young Authors Program is offered to all of our students K through 8, and participation is optional. This year, we had about 365 student authors submit stories to be judged in our Young Authors Program. This made it really, really difficult to narrow down for our winners. Luckily, we had some amazing community members who volunteered as judges to help us choose winners for each grade level per building. Before I recognize our winners, I just wanted to thank our parents, all of them, for supporting all of you in the process. That was a long process, of course, and I would like to also thank our judges that volunteered at their time, and Eileen De La Hanta, who coordinated the Young Authors Day for judging. So the winners for our 23, 24 K-5 Young Authors are as follows. From Chessic, for kindergarten, we have Owen Amen. You could just wave your hand. Owen? Owen? There you go. Owen, 1st grade, Elizabeth Angie. 2nd grade, Brooke Coyote. Brooke, I'm sorry, Coyote, please, thank you, I knew that was gonna happen, I'm so sorry. From Martin, 3rd grade, Kira Franzen. 4th grade, Vivian Nava. 5th grade, Reese Jaeger. McHaven, kindergarten, is Jamison Secor. 1st grade is Remi Weiner. 2nd grade is Kylie Fry. Conley, 3rd grade, Ayla Colton. 4th grade, Joanna Klastava. 5th grade, Nicole Boudick. Leggie, kindergarten, Bo Ariego. 1st grade, Kate Medina. 2nd grade, Oliver Patrell. 3rd grade, Vanessa McHugh. 4th grade, Diana Matz Andrea. And 5th grade, Olivia Calabrese. Hi, I'm Tammy Carpenter, the middle school coordinator, and we had wonderful submissions from middle schoolers again this year. Our Marlowe Young Author is Jasmine Burrows. And from Heineman, Eliana Marin. We're gonna have everybody gathered for a picture. Tyler went to the bathroom. Little guys in the front? Yes, could you all get up? Good. Close enough? No, we get close. Smile. Everybody, smile. Smile. Say there's a minute, guys. 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 Say there's a minute, guys.
You. Stand there. When she's gone, when she's out of there, stand there.
But you didn't fire her.
Or when she's out there. All right, no. Chop, chop, chop. Chop, chop, chop. Quick picture.
All right, moving on to number seven. Public comments, I think I got the notification that there are none.
Mark scared him away.
No public comments. Moving on to number eight, we're just kind of off the agenda. I can have one change, like, yes. Moving fourteen point seven ahead of fourteen point one. Any other adjustments or changes? Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as is, with the exception of moving fourteen point seven ahead of fourteen point one.
Second it.
Thanks, Mr. Quaziano. And I have a little call.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mrs. Quaziano?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
We move on to number nine. Superintendent, for this long.
Sure. We will go ahead and start by highlighting and recognizing our donations. We had a number of donations this month, so we'd like to thank all of the individuals and businesses for the continued support of our different programs and our district as a whole. We have first to finish, $500 from contracted sales to the Huntley High School girls track and field. Catherine Lawson, $275 for Huntley High School boys swimming team. Huntley Grid Iron Club, $525 for the Huntley football breakfast. For Huntley High School boys basketball, we had a number. Right Side Insurance and Financial Services, $250. KWD Wealth Management, $500. DND Comfort Heating and Air Conditioning, $500. And Signature Transportation Group, $450. Again, thank you to all of those individuals and businesses for their continued support to allow our students to not only excel in the classroom, but also in outside activities as well. Then, a couple other highlights. Just wanted to share and highlight our special Olympics. inaugural team, our Huntley Hurricanes competed this past weekend, and we have five individuals moving forward. June seventh and eighth, or seventh and eighth, I'm not sure which one of those exactly. I think one of those is the Travel Down, down in Bloomington. We will have those five individuals who are competing, and we hope to have a number of us out there cheering them on, so maybe we'll have a little caravan going. So, again, that was quite exciting. Our learning fairs. This weather wasn't great, but Tuesday night, it was on this campus, parking with a hot commodity, but nobody was upset, even in the rain, trying to find a spot. Walking the halls of Conley and McHaven on Wednesday, or Tuesday night, and then Reed Road, Chesapeake and Martin last night. It was fantastic to see all of the things that our fifth grade students do kind of highlighted there. It wasn't just what was going on in the classroom, there was arc activities, there was a weaving station at one of the schools, there was one of the schools where they could write kindness notes to teachers or staff members or fellow classmates. We saw things that took me back to, what was it, just dance, but it was music and them using instruments and all kinds of fun things like that. And the smiles on the faces of all of the students, and I think the appreciation from parents about this culminating activity. It was a great shift from our previous curriculum nights to highlight these great things that are going on, and so well attended. Our last one is on the thirtieth out at Leggie, so a couple weeks from now, we'll be able to celebrate the successes there. And that wraps up our learning fairs for elementary. Just wanted to share, and there'll be more information coming, but Mr. Dean has kind of taken the lead and has been the main liaison, but now we are moving forward into other aspects of planning with the fire department, the police department, the village, the school districts, and potentially the hospital may have some role in doing a full-scale safety event out at our high school. We've done a lot of other things with our drills on a regular basis. We've done some reunification practices with some of our schools, and I would like to thank Mr. Dean for kind of taking the lead on those, but wanting to make sure that our community is prepared for if there are a large-scale need for an evacuation or some type of an event. And so that partnership within this community has been fantastic, and so that is going to be coming forward and moving ahead, and there may be some opportunities for some individuals from some of the other entities I quote to board and others maybe out viewing, and so we'll get more information out to you as well as moving forward on that. We have many CPI presentations that we've been doing about the great work that has been going on, and four of those live in the Special Education Department. And so next Tuesday, the twenty-third, at the Steering Committee, CAC. The CAC, an update with much more specific information about the work that's been done, the findings and the recommendations will be done there. And then a recent report will be coming to the board as part of Mrs. Gill's presentation, but more of the nuts and bolts to the audience. That this truly impacts will be presented again next Tuesday, the twenty-third, and it's super exciting to see the work and the recommendations that will benefit our students, not only in our Special Education Department, but enhancing all areas of our school districts. So, if you'd like to attend that and learn more, we please welcome all of you and all of our parents to be there as well. The last one, piece that I just wanted to highlight, and I know it falls under our consent agenda, and so we all just kind of will do voting and all of those, is a hire that's on our personnel report. And I would like to just call it to attention, although we're not voting on it for a few minutes. But will you stand up, read in, just wait for a moment? Mrs. Captain is being recommended as our athletics director over at the high school. And I just wanted to, you know, it's part of there, and I know you hate to be embarrassed and know you're spotlight of everything, but you will for two seconds for me. But Mrs. Captain has been part of this district for a number of years. She, when you think about Huntley and the school district, is one of those people that your mind just goes right away to, has been, had been at Marlowe for a number of years, has now been up at the high school, and I know it's been a goal and a dream. She's been part of athletics her whole life. In college, played, coached, has coached in this district and is now being recommended. And we look forward to the opportunities, that we have a great athletic department up at the high school, and to see the direction of where we can continue to grow and provide opportunities for our student athletes, not only on the field and the courts, and all of this, but other leadership opportunities and community type involvement in every direction is super exciting. So, since we don't get to do that under consent, I wanted to take that opportunity right now and just recognize that. Thank you. That's all for me, because the budget comments will be, Mr. Altmaier, I may chime in from time to time on that when we get to that.
Oh.
All right, number ten, two financial officer in charge of Mr. Altmaier. What's your name on your business?
Thank you very, very much. You know, I love having the opportunity to present the budget, but presenting the budget this week with all the learning fairs going on, and to present this budget after all of these young authors came through is awesome. Because it's really a friendly reminder of why we do what we do, right? Why we allocate resources, the way we allocate resources. And from our perspective, from what we do from an operational efficiency standpoint, right, we want to give all the dollars we can so that we can make the difference that we just saw before us, which was awesome. So, it's hard to follow that, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best here. This is the first draft of the FY25 budget, right? We don't finalize this draft for five more months. So, this board will see three to four, probably four more drafts of this budget. And one thing is for sure, it's really early in the process, and this budget will change. But directionally, we're gonna talk about the big picture, I'll talk about the assumptions, the material drivers of this budget. We'll talk about adjustments that we still have to make, and risks and concerns, and those are the things that we generally talk about. But I will try to talk about them at a very high level, because this is really an informational budget. It's draft one of the budget, right, to give the board some comfort and to give us some focus and some ideas of what, where are we trending for the FY25 budget? The board will have the opportunity to approve the first draft of the budget in June, and that's called a tentative draft. So, first take, oh, the board has to approve a tentative budget so that we have marching orders to move forward. And then the final budget will be approved in mid-September, so that we could file that appropriately with the state as well. So, I'll get on with it. So, the big picture, we're gonna start with, the very good news is that really, directionally, right, we've been looking at this budget and this five-year plan really since September, October, November timeframe, when we were collective bargaining, right? Because we wanted to make sure that this budget and the future of the district, right, that we were placing resources appropriately, we were taking care of our staff, we were making sure that, you know, it is all students always, and this budget is a reflection of our strategic plan, which does just that. And the good news is, directionally, it's exactly as we thought it would be, okay? Operating revenues are coming in $5.8 million higher from the FY24 budget at $134.9 million. Operating expenditures are $6.3 million above the FY24 budget, primarily salaries and benefits, to $133.8 million, resulting in currently an operating surplus of a little over $1.1 million. With an ending fund balance approximating, using the FY24 budget as a baseline, a 29.3% operating fund balance at $39.5 million. So, that's just very high level. Let's talk about some of the revenue assumptions. Property taxes represent about 61% of the revenue for the district, and the good news with, well, property taxes so far, is that those numbers are really locked and loaded, or they cap them on. And I say that because the board approved the FY, the final 2023 levy at 5%, and new construction came in a little higher. We talked about that at the last meeting at $31.4 million, so those numbers have been reflected within this budget. And we do know the Consumer Price Index for the 2024 levy, next year's levy. And so that's at 3.4%, and we are estimating new construction at $15 million. Now, we will probably tweak that by September, as we do have a lot more information from local developers. So, that is a line item that we feel very good about right now. If anything, it'll probably go up a little bit, because we do feel that new construction will come in higher than $15 million, and what we are trending in the out years. State funding reflects the annual hold harmless with additional evidence-based funding of approximately $2.8 million. So, last year, we were elevated from tier-two adequacy level to tier-one adequacy level, and resulting in additional dollars being provided to the district from $1.3 million to $2.8 million. We do feel, based on understanding the evidence-based formula and talking with ISB, that we will be tier-one again, and if we are tier-one again, we approximately receive an additional $2.8 million of funding to help with our adequacy level. But that number, you never know if that number is really gonna hold true, because it is all dependent upon the state of Illinois and their budget. And setting aside an additional, additional dollars for education, typically over the last six to seven years, it's been $350 million. And there is no reason at this point to believe that they are not gonna do that based on the governor's budget speech. A few more items to note. FY25 interest earnings are currently budgeted flat with FY24 at $1 million, based on our current interest earnings, and we are trending above current that million dollars in interest earnings. That will be adjusted closer to year-end if we really understand what the economy is looking like, five months from now, and as we all know, it can rapidly change a little bit. And then lastly, ESAR funds, right? I think we're all familiar with ESAR funds. ESAR funds have been eliminated from this budget, as all those funds are no longer available. So, the revenues and expenditures related to ESAR have been pulled out of the FY25 budget, and also explain some of the variances up and down. And we're not gonna talk through all the variances, we're gonna just talk through most of the major assumptions. Salaries and benefits. Salaries and benefits, well, they represent about 79% of this budget, right? Salaries represent 61%, and health insurance, IMRF, TRS, payroll taxes represent the other 18%. You wanna further break down, health insurance approximates 10% to 11% of the overall budget. Salaries within this budget and five-year plan reflect collective bargaining agreements with 3.5% in the out years, for which, well, we don't have collective bargaining agreements. It also reflects the estimated savings associated with the retirements, the known retirements that are in the pipeline. So, any savings associated with a retiring employee, possibly replaced by a new employee, are reflected in this budget, and those amounts agree with what we had discussed during collective bargaining. For FY25 and throughout the forecast years, health insurance, due to rising cost of health insurance, as we talk about it almost every single month. We arrived at the budget for FY25 by really trending out where we think we're gonna end up for FY24. And that's gonna be about $13.1 to $13.3 million, plus an additional 7% is where we're currently budgeted for FY25. Again, that's one of those line items, and as we get closer to September, we will finalize and adjust as appropriate. Lastly, there's, let's talk about capital expenditures. We have capital expenditures for operations and maintenance are budgeted at $2.3 million, that approximates an $800,000 decrease from prior year. And those dollars are set aside for, well, the items primarily that Mr. Rinkotic had talked about in his deferred maintenance plan. As a placeholder, I noted in the memo, capital expenditures for the transportation department approximate $1.1 million. On an annual basis, we've been setting aside $1 to $1.1 million for an additional eight to 10 buses. I said as a placeholder, because in the middle of typing this memo, we were still working with transportation to figure out, well, how many buses do we need in transportation for next year? And that number will come down quite a bit, because it looks like their need is five or six buses for FY25. So, that's another line item that will be adjusted in the next draft or future drafts of the budget. Moving on to continued unknowns and risks with the budget. You know, as I mentioned, we're five months away from finalizing this. We still have to finalize all the state revenues, because we don't know what the state of Illinois is gonna set aside. We don't know exactly what our EBF portion of the adequacy formula will be. We need to finalize special education costs associated with private tuition, room and board, the IDEA grant. We need to finalize health insurance, which is what we talked about. And, you know, I always note this is the overall health of the economy, depending upon where the economy goes in the next five months will and could have a very material impact on the FY25 budget and beyond. Other future adjustments, there's a lot of state grants that we have within our revenue stream. We have the transportation claim, I mentioned the IDEA grant, we have the title grant, we have national school lunch, we have final special education estimates. We don't know the exact number of students that might be privately placed, and that's a large expense item. And we have a few other operational efficiencies that we are still working on, that we need to tweak the budget for. But speaking about operational efficiencies, we have brought forth operational efficiencies such as a decrease in telephone services. We brought forth savings associated with software applications. Those type of savings have already been baked into this budget, but we will continue to modify and tweak those as appropriate. Other things that we, as a cabinet level, continue to work on, headcount reductions, headcount reduction for, over the forecast years. Having a plan in place to make sure that we are properly staffed, so that we can be ready for the future. If you had a chance to look at the budget and the five-year plan, we look pretty good for the next few years. We do. But beyond years two, or three and four and five, we start to approach some pretty, a pretty large deficit situation, because the increase in salaries are starting to outpace the revenue, the expected revenue streams of the district. And that's okay, because what this budget and this five-year plan doesn't reflect is it doesn't reflect future headcount reductions. And those are the things, the cabinet, that we continue to work on, so that we have a plan in place that we can share with the board as part of our strategic plan, so that we continue to feel comfortable of not, not only with the FY25 budget, so that we feel comfortable with the FY29 budget as well, right? And that we're doing not only the things we need to do for our students... And that we're doing not only the things we need to do for our students, our young authors, but we're doing things we need to do well for our community as well, our taxpayers. Because mentioning that 61% of our revenue comes from taxpayers, that's big deal. And so, we're trying to make sure that we're operationally efficient at all levels, not just the operating side of the house. With that, I know there's a lot there. We'll continue to talk a lot more about the budget in future presentations. When I do have a future presentation, I'll actually do a presentation, so that you, I can tie some visual, provide a visual perspective of many of the things that I'm talking about. So, with that, I would love to open it up for any questions you may have.
Okay, so, real quick, just, you know, new construction, so everybody's in tune. Again, we're talking about what the EAB value is. So, when people hear $15 million, don't think that's a lot, it really equates out to $45, $50 million of fair market value of property from that standpoint. So, just to give people a frame of reference.
Correct.
Because the average person would say it seems light. The other part of it is lagged by year, because of just the nature of how property taxes works in Illinois. So, yes, you do see some decent amount of new construction, even close to the campus here, but that stuff takes a while to, until it gets on the property tax roll. So, but having said that, you know, I mean, we saw where we ended up, we probably, like you said, you'll probably tweak that, you'll probably get a little better estimate from the counties, get closer to the $20 million or more range, I'm thinking, on that item. The, I think, from a first draft landing point, you know, being around that $1 million surplus is kind of appropriate to kind of be at, to kind of have, you know, for modifications that are going to come during the course of the several months. The, I think the other element that, and how that you've quantified it, but you mentioned it, is, yeah, the part of this element of being able to provide the HEA contract to the level of increases was understanding the retirement, where that pipeline's at, and how that'll kind of mitigate some of those increases. Because I would, I would normally, just knowing what I know, would expect these salaries and stuff to be increasing more, that's offset by some of that, the return.
Yeah, I guess just a couple of comments. I think it's, directionally, I think, pretty good. The, my target is always net impact of the taxpayer, of property tax payer, under 2%, which I think is possible, are within striking distance with this budget and what's happening with the debt portion of the levy, if I understand it correctly, because that's going to come down significantly in the next year.
Correct. And within this draft of the budget, within Fund 30, if you were to look at the expense within Fund 30 on an annual basis, that is a reflection of our fiscal year debt payments, which is a combination between two levy years. But, but our debt payment comes down significantly, right? The levy year 2023 debt is approximately $12.2 million, and for levy year 2024, it comes down to $10.3 million, and then really kind of flattens off for a few years, and then reduces to approximately $10 million, $10.1 million for all remaining out-years. So, those savings are a direct savings essentially to our taxpayers as well on the tax.
And you mentioned future headcount reductions in that, and just, I'm sure everybody kind of cringes when they hear that, when, that this would be tied towards an expected enrollment decline, our ratios would stay the same, our classes would stay the same if not went lower, we would work through that, that's what you're working at on the administration side, right? We would tie this to an expected enrollment decline, which is not reflected in the current data.
Correct, correct.
I think that's one of the pieces there that, as our cabinet, we continue through these components. We've seen, as the housing market is starting to pop, I've been joining the Villas de Humble planning development meetings every Thursday to get a sense of what's going on right now. One of those timelines that are increasing, and they are seeing a large increase in the number of permits in just these last few months of the year. And ACT has shown that, while people are purchasing in those homes, and they have fewer number of students, or those students are a number of years there, or as people are graduating, or people have been staying in their homes, where it's not going to turn or leaving, and then new families coming in. However, we're going to have to monitor that. And so, that's been great to look at, what the village is coming and the number, because there are different projects that are on there right now. Moving and grooving, sector there has been out to some of the sales facilities, and been talking to the developers there, so that we get a sense of, we have a Google Doc if people are purchasing, if they're willing to provide us that information of how many students they have, or children in the age, just to kind of plan for that. So, part of that is, we're planning out to the out-years, the next four or five years with that, what does our headcount look like? We are sort of going to try to grasp and be able to do some of these with, it's not forecast, I, I don't know if it's changed. Yep. With looking at the different components to be able to track what the student enrollment may look like, and if we are having a little bit of a difficult time with that, trying to get a number, and if we're seeing a huge change in that, trying to, we may want to ask, you know, hire a company to come. We've done that in the past, we've had, need to do that for a number of years. But I think, trying the things that we're doing right now, and staying in communication with the villages of coming, we should be pretty comfortable space-wise. We look at what we have in capacity, I know, Mr. Griffin, you asked kind of not just what is their enrollment, what are the capacity of our building, so that not only, you all know that, but our community knows that, people worry, all these houses are popping, where can we go? And when we look at, so, yes, like, Leggie, I think is around 800-ish students. I was there, and it was 11, 1200, right? So, we have capacity, but we can quantify what those numbers mean with looking at class sizes that we have been, you know, these students fill our best for, what's going on with students. And so, all that will be part of somebody's future updates with the budget as we roll up before September, and then those out-years that Mr. Allmeyer talked about.
I think one of the hard parts about the forecast and the enrollment is, I don't know that it's traditionally going to be somebody coming to a starter home, they've got a five-year old, they're going to kindergarten. I see these houses that are going up, but can't imagine that they're starter homes. Or people are making a lot more, a lot of these homes are very expensive, which is another thing the villages work on, I think. They need options for that. They've been difficult to pinpoint, just upon those subdivisions, to get an idea of someone coming in without kids, obviously, in fact, this provides the tiers, but they're coming in with kids. Not like they're, they're all going to be third graders, but they're going to be spread, you know, across the campus, and we're also toward that right now.
I think it's just a couple other comments on that. So, I, we've had some banter back and forth on this. I'm worried about the health insurance, so I get it. Some way, if we're showing a little bit of surplus here, we might want to shuffle some more money in that, just to make sure we're protected on that. I, given the correspondence, I understood the buses might change a little bit. Again, if we can figure out a way to have that net target to be around that 2% to the property tax owners, I think that's a reasonable amount for growth each year. Things that are left over, maybe we look at other projects to pull them forward in 2027, and then where we don't have surpluses, and maybe we can look at something like that, is there something we would go forward with if we have access? Just something to think about. Again, my target is that's set up 2%, which I think is, is right here, with a little bit of looking at it. That's all I have, I'm sure. We'll have more discussions over the next five months.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that they come? All right. That, we move on to number 11 for the administration tax. This is smart. Do you think that?
All right. I just, yeah, you would have seen, there is a monthly report, and we had four FOIA's this past month, those are also posted on our website. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions about FOIA? All right, with that, thank you, Mr. Martin. I'll move on to 12, the President's report. Don't have a lot of, I guess, just one thing I saw a little bit out on the social media bit, I wanted to, if there was somebody who came in and said, hey, I might be moving to the area, I'm just going to reflect on that. Would you recommend Humble High School, which is really a reflection of our district? And there were, there was a whole set of variety of comments in there, I would say. The majority were actually fairly positive on the district. There were some negative about some specific experiences that kids had. But the, I just want to comment on this, because I think in our strategic plan, we need to think about this a little bit, is we do have a large high school, and I think what I heard you say earlier tonight was that Marlowe is the, in the top five largest middle schools in the state. We need to figure out how to make the schools seem smaller, right? Because people like neighborhood school, but we're not going to have them, they're not necessarily that cost-effective. We have, I think, a great setup here, but I think we need to work on our ways of trying to make the experience seem more family-friendly, or smaller to everybody coming in there, should not be overwhelmed. But I don't know how to do that, but it's just something that I pulled out, and I've had multiple parents in different things say to have the same thing.
I think that's something, knowing that, we can reflect on, looking and investigating what are different models out there. We've had some things over the year with the freshman academy, and there's been some shifts in that. Our elementary used to be much larger when we look at the middle school, but when people would walk into the elementary, it's when they were at that size. And still, for many people, because it's the campus approach and not the neighborhood elementary, they are larger than many of the others that people are used to. But even the middle school, where we're able to put whether pods or teams together, where you feel a smaller school within that, and that's absolutely something that we can reflect on and see, are there opportunities that we can do that at, again, with bettering that opportunity, whether it be at Marlowe, or learning from what works at the elementary and middle school, that could possibly be feasible at the high school? So, knowing that, that that's a, some are a feel from some, it's their reality, right? And so, protections are a reality for people, and that's good to know that, and we can reflect on looking at that, because I know we have had some shifts with what did that freshman academy look like, and, you know, how do we, you know, get back to some of that? So, thank you for sharing that.
Yes, and now to put her on the spot, but the athletic director is one piece of this, because that is one very particular complaint about.
Almost that one.
You just happened to be sitting right in front of me. It is nice to all, since we get back.
You can run now if you want.
One particular piece that is, people want, people benefit from being in athletics, and when you only have a basketball team that can only have 10, 12 kids on it, or how many teams we have, there's a lot who don't get to play it. Figuring out a way to do that is something that will hit that challenge to you. No question.
Sounds great.
All right, with that, moving to 12.1, board discussion, so any new business items that we wanted to bring up? All right, on that, we move to number 13, the consent agenda here. So, any comments about the consent agenda? All right, with that, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as written in the agenda, which is 51, 32 the minutes, 33 the HR personnel report, 54 the payables, 35 the environmental contract extension, 36 the pool photography services. I think it's a good move on that, to move forward with that, so I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliaano. Can I roll over?
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bettman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy. Mr. Quagliaano.
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion passes, and we will move on to 14.7, which is the intergovernmental agreement with Humble High District, Mr. Allmeyer.
Thank you very much. I am incredibly excited, actually, to present this item on the agenda, because we've been working with the Hart District, you know, for a very, very long time. Currently, we have three intergovernmental agreements between us, right? We have, they do Beyond the Bell for us, for our teachers, for our staff, for our community, they utilize our building, they utilize youth basketball in our buildings, feeder basketball, they maintain and take care of our middle school baseball field. Meanwhile, we're utilizing the Hart District for our teachers, for Beyond the Bell, we utilize the Hart District for the high school golf, the time crest, we utilize their facilities for AP testing, and now we're going to utilize their facilities for our light program, which is an absolute fabulous location for our students. So, very excited to, well, blend all of those agreements into one. And so, what we're doing here is memorializing those agreements into one, adding the use of the light program. And really, you know, the Hart group, I, if you read the memo, right, a lot of, Hart's been around for several years, right? And the mission of Hart, and I specifically noted this within the memo, one of the, one of their missions is to collectively seek partnerships to benefit all of our organizations whereby working together, right? And therefore benefiting our community. And I think the agreement that we pull together within this one intergovernmental agreement is really how taxing districts should be working together, and partnering together to benefit, well, each other's students, or each other's community, they're all our community, they're all of our students, and how can we help each other for the things that we don't have or don't necessarily use anymore, such as the Dykey Hart facility? And by the way, in our audience, we have the Executive Director Scott Crowe and the Board President Keith Wohl, so they're here for support, and if we have any questions, they're here to field some of those questions. So, we did talk about this at the last meeting. One thing to know, in an effort to really fulfill the mission of Hart, and looking at all of the different things that we do on both sides, we were ending up at a cost-neutral, very close to cost-neutral, for the billings that were happening on both sides. So, we agreed to eliminate billings, right? We're not going to bill them for the use of the facilities for feeder basketball, but they're not going to bill us for the use of the light program, as an example. This contract agreement also had clauses in it that we'll sit down on an annual basis, and we'll make sure that it continues to be in the best interest of our organization, our community, our students, our staff, so that we can continue to do the things that we need to do from our mission statement. You know, I love the Hart District mission statement, and that's connecting to the community, and that goes hand in hand with what we do with our students. And I mentioned earlier that 61% of our revenue comes from taxpayers, well, that's the community. So, I really do think this is a great agreement on both sides, and administration's recommendation is to have this agreement approved by the Board tonight. We would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Any questions?
I mean, I'll just echo, it does look like the right type of agreement, we just need to make sure it stays in balance, which it sounds like, listening to the last four meetings that it was to be set up that way, so we'll take advantage of one for the other.
We've had the attorneys look at it and make sure that, you know, it's a solid agreement on both sides, and, but we've done our due diligence on that side as well.
Ms. Gill, are you excited about the new building?
So, I actually don't have words, I am extremely excited. This has been a long time coming, and there's still more to come, so this has been, it's an incredible journey, and I credit the advocacy of our parents and our students, and really the support all of you have given to the efforts we're making to ensure our students are getting the transition services that they need. So, yeah, yeah, I'm excited. Thank you.
I want to say that one of the first things, when Ms. Gill got there, and we were looking at that, and it was, you know, it doesn't have to be one location, and I think that your experience and expertise in that, right, what's the right facility for each of the different components to meet the needs of our students? And I said, let's hop in the car, I had a driver, because it was shortly after the procedure, and right, and we got over there, and when we walked in, like, her eyes lit up, like, this is the perfect place. And then, to be able to meet regularly with the Hart District and the open-mindedness, and again, it's that connection to the community, and how partnerships like this benefit everybody. And so, that, again, this is how partnerships in the community should be done, and
And so that, again, this is how partnerships in the community should be done, and we're able to continue working together. And I know that is just one portion of the bigger plan for the light program and meeting the needs of our kiddos and students, and hopefully we'll have an update on some of those other pieces there. But it's nice to be able to move forward in those, and we've had a long time partnership, and I think this is, again, Mr. Almeyer talked about the mission of the Hart group and how we want to do what's best for our members of the community, and I think we can help lead the way with that. And so I thank you very much, one, for the opportunity to do that, but two, for being here to show that support of this is tax facilities, right? And that's what we're asking for, we're doing right now. So thank you.
Yes, that's great. Excuse me. Any other questions? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve 14.7, the governmental agreement with Huntley Park District.
Second.
All right, thanks, Mr. Thompson. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy. Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion passes. So we move to 14.1, McHenry County Regional State School Program, Ms. Lombard.
So this is an annual.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week. This is an annual item. We have an intergovernmental agreement with our regional office of education here in McHenry County. And so again, we are bringing forward, asking for the extension to continue that participation for opportunities as needed for the regional, or the McHenry County Regional State Schools program. And there's a slight change from many, many years. It was held flat. They are needing to increase the daily rate from $40 to $45. That is absolutely, again, surprising that it's only the $5 because it has been flat for so many years. This year, they did move locations. They used to be in the Union area, they are now out in McHenry. But again, the recommendation is to be able to extend our participation in this intergovernmental agreement with the RWE from July 1 of 2024 to June 30 of 2025. And it has absolutely been another great partnership for our needs as needed. Any questions?
Such a no brainer. All right, so I make a motion to approve 14.1, McHenry County Regional State School Program.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
All right, with that, 14.1 passes. We move to 14.2, multi-year contract, 2024 to 2028.
Sure, the next two are almost identical. So we'll start with multi-year contract that is being recommended for Dr. Zare. Usually, our multi-year contract for our cabinet administrators is a three-year. And we are trying to, as we have opportunities, to get them on the same cycle. We have two newer ones that will get up to the same cycle here, hopefully in a couple of years. But that's, it's a small change from three to four years. Another for Dr. Zare is a change in title and a little bit of some of the areas and responsibilities. As you're aware, previously, we had an associate superintendent that was able to focus on a variety of different areas. And in talking with Dr. Zare, I'm still overseeing human resources, but taking on some of the responsibilities and looking at, you know, some of those components with the student enrollment piece, behavior management, discipline, those kinds of things. We worked very closely on that this year, and to be able to expand his skill set and the leadership and the benefit of our district, he was very open to doing that. Dr. Zare's part of this district for many, many years. I remember being part of hiring him for an assistant principal and to be able to see that growth in his leadership over the school district and the impact that he has had on a variety of our different buildings and this district. I am very excited to bring this seeking approval for an extended contract for the next four years. And the things he's able to do to continue to grow our district and each of our 10 buildings. So any questions?
All right, no questions. I guess I'll just make a comment. I don't know that everybody sees what Dr. Zare does, if you watch the board meetings, he is very active in our, in our whole session. So I'm glad to see him today. And I can have those contracts in check. So I will make a motion for 14.2, multi-year contract, 2024 to 2028, for Dr. Zare.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Quagliano. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Craddy. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Mrs. Wiley. Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
All right, the motion, 14.2, passes 6-0. We move on to 14.3, multi-year contract, 2024 to 2028, for Dr. Zare.
Again, changed from a three-year to a four-year. Again, same reason, same rationale. Dr. McCrystal has also been with the district for a number of years in the curriculum department and has taken on a variety of different roles that she has overseen over those years, and the impact started with our elementary schools and has expanded to touch all of our buildings and working with all of our staff in that area of curriculum and instruction. And she eagerly jumped into that. I know has built a team under her that has, one of the strongest that I've seen and were able to do in the work that you've been able to accomplish with that team and the extended team out in the buildings in these last few years has been great. And I just think as we move forward with our planning and the things that we talk about often, we are going to see some steady increases in our student achievement and the opportunities that we're able to share with our community and prepare our young ones for when they do graduate. Something I did not say for under Dr. Zare is, but it goes for both of them. I think that people often forget that it's the work of so many people. And so while we leave from up here, they are out there every day doing the pieces with our staff and our students and our administrators that are in the building that goes for Mr. Almeyer, Mrs. Farr, and Mrs. Gill as well. But it's a great team, and I appreciate all of you because I think that we only do it together, and I want to make sure that people recognize that. And so our ability to be able to keep quality individuals in the district is a benefit for me, but it's most importantly a benefit for our community and our students. Any questions?
No, I just want to echo the same thing, that firmly believe in sending out longer-term contracts to quality people, that you want to show them that they're wanted, needed, and definitely happy to have both of you willing to be around and expect you to be around. And honor that contract for all four of those years. So we got very, very ooze about them.
Guys, I think we're all very excited to have both of you, Dr. McCrystal, staying here. She did take on essentially combining the curriculum, but in the unit district, it kind of makes sense to have one person kind of watching over the curriculum for the whole globe. And I guess just a compliment to Ms. Lombard, for those who critique the number of administrations and spending and things like that, we had actually eliminated positions here at the highest level, but we're promoting people because we can have the best people in some of these roles. So I think that's the right way to use our budget. I appreciate that. With that, I will, unless there's other comments? I will make a motion to approve 14.3, multi-year contract, 2024 to 2028, for Dr. McCrystal.
Second.
Mr. Bittman.
Mr. Troy, roll call please.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes, I'm very thankful for you all. Big yes for both of you.
All right, with that, 14.3 passes 6-0 with a big yes from Ms. Murray. All right, moving to 14.4, FY '25 administrative rate, Dr. Zare.
Now that the pressure's off, I'm going to push on.
Thank you. Scaring me the entire time. The memo in front of you is a recommendation for our final group of individuals for rate increase throughout FY '25 to our administrators. So the recommendation from administration is a 4.25% increase, that's equivalent to what was approved a couple months ago for Atwell individuals, and also reflects on what's in the current has the contract on that FY '25.
Any questions or comments?
The quick comment is, yeah, it's our administrator rate increases have generally lagged most of our other staff over the last probably three to five years. So it definitely, I think this is warranted for this particular group, given the just the CPI numbers that's been the last couple of years, and the fact that they have lagged other peer groups, that it was important to kind of get this stuff boosted up a little bit.
Yeah, and an effort, obviously, to retain folks, prepare folks, and it moves our baseline to only see this increase. So and as Mr. Quagliano, there were a couple of years there where we weren't a couple percentages behind some other districts, but it helps maintain.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve 14.4, FY '25 administrative rate. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
All right, with that, the motion passes 6-0, 14.4. Move to 14.5, supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Thompson?
Nothing to add.
All right, any comments or questions about that? I'll make a motion to approve 14.5, supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy. Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
All right, with that, we move to our last one in Section 14, extracurricular committee recommendation.
Thank you very much. I love ending with this one because this really outlines the opportunities while that we're providing our kiddos at all levels. And the extracurricular committee has provided, has been providing this recommendation, I think, for the past maybe three, four years, in accordance with the last collective bargaining agreement, as well as the one we just recently approved this past year. So on an annual basis, over the last several years, the committee has been allotted a $35,000 allotment to be used to increase base stipends, to add stipends, to amend stipends, to eliminate, right? And it has forced very good dialogue at that level. And all levels are at the table, from elementary, to middle school, to high school, to athletic, to people who oversee the clubs in those buildings. And we're all at the table, and we all have incredible dialogue about things that are good for kids, right? And clubs that may be lacking in participation, and no longer, we shouldn't be paying stipends on those things anymore because the participation isn't there. So this is a very long memo because over the past year, we've met, and we're supposed to meet four times during the year, one of the times at year end, and we've already met, I think, six or seven times, including Zoom meetings, because of the list of opportunities that you have in front of you utilizing those dollars. So within this memo, we have a list of additional stipends. We have a list of adjusted or amended stipends based upon maybe the amount of work put in or the involvement, the participation level, and/or maybe what other districts are paying for that similar type of stipend. We have eliminated stipends, which we talked about, maybe based upon the lack of participation. We have trial stipends, and there's a lot of new trial clubs and activities out there for our students, which is absolutely great, many of them which are in their second year trial stipend. And then ultimately, there is a portion left over that we also recommend to be used for a base percentage stipend increase, I believe of $6,800 and approximately 50 basis points. So with that, without going through all of this, because there's quite a bit here, it's quite a bit of great opportunities for our kiddos, we ask the board to approve the 2024-2025 extracurricular committee recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay. Got one in, I'm a sound dense here, but what is the Leos, L-E-O-S? Are we missing a G in it? It's Legos at the high school level, I just think so. Okay, so what is it?
The Leo's Club? Leo's Club? Can somebody describe the Leo's Club or a apostrophe of it in there? Yeah, the Leo's Club.
I think you have to be born in the month of June.
Yeah. The only activity I'm familiar with. It was, it saved me for myself.
The Leo's Club is a junior version of the Lions, yeah.
Okay. The Leo's one is not Lego.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you.
So can I just understand, so.
Sure.
Does this reflect all activities, or these are just new activities and then different?
Yeah, so this is new activities, amended activities, and trial activities primarily.
So this is an all encompassing of all activities?
No.
We've already approved those.
We've already approved those, and that, and they're Schedule C of the collective bargaining agreement.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Right, I think in the, this changes a little bit in the contract you just signed in year two and three.
Correct. And then typically what happens when we add additional stipends here and they get approved, we then amend the contract online, that Schedule V, and/or Schedule C, that this is Schedule V, I believe, to add these additional stipends appropriately, so it's very transparent, all involved, that those are additional stipends that are approved by the board.
And then we'll have a revisit of this next year at this time for the.
Correct, this is an annual process.
All right, any other questions? So we'll move on. I'll make a motion to approve 14.6, extracurricular committee recommendation.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
All right, with that, it passes 6-0. We move on to 15, which is our public comment, and I don't see anything. I'm looking at the most logical choice. She's shaking her head no. And with no public comment, we move to 16, which is adjournment. So I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:41 a.m. Second. Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. A roll call, please.
Aye, aye.
All those, meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.